It's like theater when you're trapped in your kid, you don't like it.
My old man smoked Camels.
That's what I said.
Non-fuelled? Non-fuelled, yeah.
So I, yeah, so I didn't smoke for a long time after I did my first one.
Yeah.
God!
It was good then, right?
No, my father smoked for the while, I was younger than my mom, but.
Yeah. It's not easy.
But there's a lot more stuff to go back then too, you know?
Putting smoking part and then putting drinking part.
But then they come out like the jewels and other stuff, did people fight that?
Oh, I know.
Your boys were really...
Mm-hmm.
But supposedly the vaping at the school is probably that all right. Obviously the tools.
Share. Yeah.
Not feeling.
I don't understand vaping, why do you want to inhale blueberry air with nothing else in it?
Yeah, okay, see, just to get a product?
Yeah, no, no, say there's no nicotine, people really do just inhale flavor.
You're not supposed to.
Isn't also, it's like a mist or it's, it's actually a vapor? Yeah, exactly. Is that hurting your lungs, something you wouldn't?
Well, no, no, they're saying that it's actually worse than cigarettes.
The thing is, the thing is, I came on the scene and blew up so fast, nobody knew what to do.
Right, that's right. Nobody tested anything yet, nobody.
So we are live.
There's heavy metals in them, they say.
Alright, welcome back everybody. Sorry about the delay on that, we had a little bit of issue. But we're gonna back up live, so we're gonna go ahead and jump to... Amanda Cross with record retention.
So I have... And some recommendations, I don't know if you would like a copy, but.
Very sorry.
I'm not exactly sure whether the antel starts beginning. A few things I've been working on, I filed the groups of comments that I discussed I found in the room last time. I started scanning some general and administrative forms and policies. There's a form drawer, looks like a lot of stuff could be pre-used or is still in use, but I wasn't sure, so I just scanned the whole thing. I'm continuing to merge the planning board files with the select board files, which has been going really well. I've actually been able to make files for the selectmen that were missing because they were already in the planning board files. Just the pieces you needed. I've been disturbing duplicate copies of things, oftentimes I'll find three copies of the exact same need in a file. And I've been saving the ones that have any notes because whoever processed these, these needs, tends to take notes on them. I'm not sure what's done with them, but I know if it's entered in like the MSI or what other programs there are. The filing room is labeled, I inventoried it and assessed the cabinets. As well as the individual departments filing needs, which is Appendix One, a long part. That discusses the number of drawers and cabinets in use versus what's needed, as well as... I meant to improve the condition on here, but I might have missed it back.
You said thirty, you got fifty-five drawers, thirty-nine of which function?
That's right, so there's a total of fifty-five drawers, thirty-nine of them function. And by function, I mean can they hang append effects flex folder in that? So, no, most of them you can't. They don't have the guides that you hang the files on. Most of the drawers open, some are sticky, some of them don't have any way, they're just scrap metal.
Got fifteen file cabinets, six have fully functioning drawers.
Yeah.
So we have nine pieces of scrap, scrap iron.
You could probably, I mean, depending on what you want to do, you could probably sell the, some of the other ones for parts. Because for example, a drawer may have written fair, but it's got three working drawers and one busted bottom drawer. It's like, okay, so fix the bottom drawer, put the file guides in it, and now you have a functioning file cabinet.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you, because guides are fairly cheap to get. I know where you get them, fairly cheap.
You do, that's even better, yeah. Some are misfits, like they don't fit that particular drawer, but they're there, the guides are. But some of them have popped out completely while I was just taking things out, you know, look, it's just so heavy, the weight, like, bode out, so. So, I've also noticed that a lot of older forms that have been updated are still in circulation. Like I'll find a copy of a permit form from, I'm assuming the nineties, and it's a copy of a copy and you can hardly read it. All those things should be discarded and just stick with the most current version. One big thing is I haven't found a consistent file of any kind on roads. All the information I've found has been completely mixed in with everything else. We're talking planning board files, select board files, the safe, meeting minutes from other past meetings.
Yeah, centuries.
Yeah, literally the eighteen hundreds. I have legal counsel advising on the status of roads. So there's nothing there for those. The departments that need the most room are obviously the select board, the planning board does because they deal with grid maps. Same with zoning and cemetery committee. Cemetery really also has a ten-year retention period on most of their stuff, being file records, so... That's another reason why they need excessive filing. I don't know, I feel like it's excessive, but. And trustees of trust funds and finance also have quite a few drawers. That needs to be organized. And then there's the legal matters. That one's, I'm not exactly sure how to approach because each department has their own file on various legal counsel topics. So you could say the planning board has a legal file in their filing section, or you can dedicate a cabinet or two to all the legal matters across all the departments, permit pending, past, any settlements brought against the town. Suits and settlements need to be retained permanently, so all that needs to get, um, yeah.
And where are they now?
Everywhere.
Like every year?
Yeah. Half of them, well, I would say half, I would say part of it's in select board files, then it overlaps over into planning, and then planning has a little legal file for their stuff. Then there's the A to Z files, which is really the administrative select board filing. Those have, oh my god, I just lost my train of thought, can you ask me your question? Oh, well, legal matters, that's right, so they'll be filed in the A to Z files, and I would say like Bradman and Burks in PC. That's it, I don't know what's in there, what year does it cover, what topic, and because each... It seems like the legal counsel changes over time?
It does.
Okay.
They die.
Sure, so, or it seems like we'll use one and then go to a different one and then come back to the other guy.
So they have different specialties.
Okay, so, but they're filed by the name of the legal, the attorney's office, which tells you nothing.
Would it be reasonable to file those by, like, a year?
Yes, so I was thinking it definitely needs some further identifying information, like a year or a year and a topic, just.
Well, it would be, you know, let's just say we start in January, set case, you know, case number one, twenty twenty-five, and County Troy versus Terry Clark, or Terry Clark versus County Troy.
Yeah, exactly.
It would be a system.
Yes, it would be somewhere to start for sure. I mean, and a system, I mean, it's better than the one there is. Because there's literally like seven different files for, name your favorite law firm out of ten.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of files for it.
But, but we don't know what's in them because it's not related to...
Right.
It's not tied back to anything other than the lawyer who represented the county.
Yeah, and it will contain everything from information on the suits and the settlements, court appearances, to just the general legal correspondence regarding the topic, whatever is there in the legal counsel for, so. But yeah, there'll be a bunch of Bs, and then it'll be like Silas Little, his firm, so then he's filed under S instead of L, but.
Yes, for sign, sure.
Right, so, things like that. My recommendations, so those are my findings, my recommendations for physical filing. I'm assuming the new room is for the town clerk primarily, so we won't be moving a ton of stuff in there. But the supervisors of the checklist, because the town clerk also requires their documents on hand, I figured they could probably go in town clerk's room.
Yeah.
Because they sort of overlap. There's a cabinet in there for safe routes to school, I don't know who handles that, but it's.
The law clerk.
Was that?
Planning board.
Really, okay, that, so that would stay in this room, the current room, okay. We got two new lateral cabinets, thank you for everybody who thought those.
If you want more, there's more that you can get.
Okay.
We get offered them, we're tempted to go up and pick them up, it's a problem.
Yep, and I, I may have noted in here, but the city of King and other cities also use similar things to the state, they get rid of them, so yeah.
That's why I said, it's, about every month, there's a new area that'll say, hey, we have this filing cabinet for free.
That's awesome.
We can pick them up after we snag them fast enough, these ones are, two of these snagged.
She wanted us more, I didn't know what you had.
Sure, I figured the two, I mean, they're huge, they're five drawer lateral, so that's a good start.
Now, which would you prefer, lateral or?
Either, or, laterals are nice because you can put them in the middle of the room and open them out while you line the walls with the other ones, so it's like you create aisles of file cabinets.
So either way, if we find any of these, we should try and snag it?
Yeah, just judging by the number of broken cabinets. It would be nice just to have a few that all worked. What? Like four works.
I think, the only, the only thought I would have is if we're grabbing these cabinets from the state offices or whatever, we should say this is what, we should determine what we want.
Yeah, five drawer, four drawer.
Five drawer, we're gonna do all five drawer, all sixty inches high, all forty-eight inches long, whatever, so then we're consistent. That doesn't have to be the same color, but if, if we've got it, then you're not going up and down.
Yeah, I get you, that's what, that's what I was thinking, if we have those new ones, or the two, I think they're the same size ones?
Yeah, they look to be exactly the same, just different colors.
So we basically get that, that same?
Yeah, two more of those in the middle of the room, and that's twenty drawers total, right?
Yes, that would be, yeah. Four times five.
I'm second guessing myself on everything, including basic math.
So keep going, David.
Okay, so, uh, we'll find, let's see. So, the way it should be done is you should organize into the new space or organize into the new cabinets. Don't move anything the way it is into a new area until it's cleaned up, there's no sense in it. Because you're just taking the problem and putting it over there, that's it.
So what you're saying is get the, get the rooms set up, put your new cabinets in.
Yeah, and then start pulling things out.
In a coherent manner.
Can I see another rub?
There's not much more I can pin on than that, right, out there.
That makes sense, one hundred percent.
And then, I have recommended before, but I should say it again, dedicate each, dedicate space to each department or committee. Because right now it's literally, well, I tidied it up, that's one of the things I did, I organized it so like certain departments are at least in the vicinity of the other items from that department. I did, you know, replace the broken hanging files with more folders, there's extra ones we can reuse, we don't even need to buy the hanging folders. And then there were, there's a lot of other files for other departments that aren't in the town hall, like police department. I have animal control bite logs and some other miscellaneous stuff. And I don't know if those should be stored here or if we should return them to the appropriate department.
I would think return to the appropriate.
Right, yeah, so.
Well, if it's, if it's something that's aged out, uh...
Then it's.
Well, you know, it seems like you're, maybe that, at that point, you would let bankers' boxes organized by department or year or whatever, I mean, what's the chance of Dave gonna have to go and look up some police report from nineteen seventy-two?
Right.
But by the same token, we should gather.
Well, and since it's based, I think it just follows along, if it's not.
Well, yeah, is there, is there a retention on that kind of thing, is there a rule?
Chris gave me a list of the retention stuff, I just kind of had a chance to go through all of them. And a lot of it can also be ditched out.
Yep.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, some you can't.
Some you can't, some you can't.
Where are you gonna host it?
On your Microsoft three sixty-five subscription, I can't imagine we will through all that storage.
I think we would have it, yeah.
I don't know if it's on my head, but I mean.
That could be easily figured out.
I, I stored files personally, and I have a hard time filling up three sixty-five. Although one drive I did totally kill and there was nothing, but.
Yeah, but these, these are dark ones, shouldn't have all the videos.
Exactly, they're not images, they're not videos, I mean.
I'd say it must be PDFs or.
Yeah, and even if you scan it in and you get a PDF, that's huge, there's tools to optimize it, straight it down. Then it's like four to six kilobytes, you can have, do the math, however, a hundred thousand of those you can before you fill it up, so. Um, let's see. Another thing is there needs to be space dedicated to dissolved committees that don't meet anymore because they still have meeting minutes and notes and things like that, and those have permanent protection periods for all the meeting minutes and everything.
Like the, it's, or, or, here it is, Chris.
Yeah, it's gonna step. So, and that's actually one of the ones I noted, I would, I noted what I thought was active, but I can't really tell for sure.
It's not deep yet either.
Well, yeah, last time you said you have an agricultural commission? Yeah, you got a file on it. Let's see, so as for electronic filing, you should use clean, typeable, insertable forms and make them available to the public on the front, on the public facing website, so they can just fill it in, print it out, or email it to you. There's easy ways to make it fillable on a mobile device. A lot of people actually don't have computers, like people who want a whole building permit might do their taxes on their phone. There are those people out there, I don't know how they operate, but they're there, so you might as well make it accessible to them too.
Jeremy? Oh, you live on a computer, I don't know.
I don't know.
I said, turn it off, I mean, you have an actual computer that's working on it.
He has a computer?
I think it's only working.
This is a funny, I have a business computer and I have a military computer, that's it.
Can you use both of these possible?
I don't wanna tell you how many computers.
I use everything on my phone.
Um, and then obviously there's the internal side I recommended before, where we keep all like inter-department, intra-department forms. So that way if somebody walks into, and they're like, Jeremy, a building permit, you can print it out right from the portal. If they refuse to go online or whatever, and then it's like a clean version. Anything that normally would be printed can be printed to a PDF and filed online in this internal file. And you can share it with various departments, you can set restrictions. So like, say the select board can look at everybody's documents, but the planning board can only look at the planning board, kind of effect. I do have familiarity with that as well, I have messed around with the three sixty-five permissions and the administrative side of it, adding users and all that.
Very useful.
Yeah, they make everything real easy these days.
They don't work.
Yep.
You are not allowed to edit, so you don't have to.
Yes, exactly, and you can't edit.
Look, but don't touch it.
So my other recommendations include, and this is a big one, is I think checklists should be used for each department. So, like, for their files at least, or rules of procedure, things like that. Because if you look at the planning board, for example, here, they look really disorganized, it, oh, what am I gonna find here? Well, their files, they use a checklist and they're almost always complete. Even the old ones, I'm talking back to like seventy-eight, a lot of those files have things in them. Just because they've been checking it off, and the public has a checklist to follow as well, which I think is helpful, I mean, it looks, just based on what I'm seeing in the files. A lot of documents that are older than nineteen sixty are starting to deteriorate, so those should get image first if you want to save them. There's books, like literal leather-bound books from the eighteen hundreds that is count, they discuss the road, I thought those in the safe. A lot of those are so faded you can hardly re-amount it is, and I just hate to see them disappear, for lack of a better word. I mean, they're, it looks like that photo in Back to the Future where he starts disappearing because he messed with the future, that's what it looks like. So, just a thought. The property record filing area, we know that still needs a cabinet so that we can have adequate space in there. I did mention using parts cabinets, and there is one cabinet, four drawer in there that I can't open, it's for the industrial corp, industrial development authority, it's completely locked, I think the lock needs to get drove out. So that one may or may not have stuff in it, they may or may not use a whole drawer. Yeah, okay, I don't know why it's locked, didn't have.
Somebody stood there and pressed the button.
Well, we can look and see, we have several boxes with keys around, so someone could do that, or.
I know where there are at least two more, that you might not know about.
Stop looking!
In there. I mean, it's literal, just like half boxes full of lock bits.
And these, and that, so, yep, I know, I've seen a bunch of them.
You're familiar. So, covered that. The safe, I don't know if that functions, I don't know if the door shuts all the way.
The brass, the interior of the door was brass, and they.
It's not anymore.
Well, they moved it out in World War One.
Oh.
They, they made it brass, yeah.
Oh, well, that's interesting, because also.
Starts back on.
Yeah. So I would definitely recommend organizing the safe and putting only irreplaceable documents in it. Because right now it's kind of a mishmash of a bunch of things, there's old meeting minutes from the eighteen hundreds, roads, the old adult store that was going in, there's a whole file on that, wasn't expecting to see what I saw in there when I opened it.
Well, we have. Sounds interesting.
Just.
When they first saw the, where did it say?
Oh, yeah, and so, then there's some old.
When he couldn't get the adult store in there, he switched it over to a church.
Yeah.
Oh, perfect, pretty solid, right?
You're making this up?
Yeah.
We're all in purple, make a church out of it.
Let's see, so, and so going forward, you can do, to make it easier on yourself, you can do things like dedicate a day, it doesn't even have to be a whole day, just to your filing. Once the initial, like, backlog's taken care of, you can just, a couple hours once a month should be sufficient just to keep everything current and up to date. I mean, like the map and law filing basket, which I need to do again, because that's overflowing now. I think some new property listings and subdivide it. And yeah, I think that's really most of it, so.
What about going forward, Amanda, so this, that's what you just did, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
And then you've got your.
Anything, yeah, I said, anything you can normally print can be printed to a PDF file online instead of wasting the paper and then having to scan it and put it back in. And I also recommend continuing organizing and adding the subfolders to the property record files, which you can't do until you get that cabinet. So, that's just on the back burner.
In your appendix, you laid this out for us?
Yes.
How to, how to set these up?
Exactly, so, um, on my recommendation explanation, you'll see some of my recommendations will say, file with administrative or in other departments or committees drawer. And what that means is if there's a committee that doesn't warrant getting its own drawer, just put it in an other committees folder, file, drawer, and label it. I mean, that's the best you can do.
Right, they've only got this many files.
With something like that, then you probably don't have to keep it?
Sometimes you do.
No, but you've got meeting minutes though, Jeremy, like from the Heritage Commission?
Yeah.
You have to keep those.
We got, we got a lot of minutes.
And then that file would only be that big.
I was gonna say, why don't you just scan them, if you need them?
Yeah.
The problem is, who's gonna sit and do the scanning, I mean, we.
Yeah, I tried that, it's actually not that easy.
Well, yeah, you can stay bold and everything else.
Yeah.
Or just labor.
Well, that's somewhere you hire a company to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you hire a administrative assistant to do it.
Yeah.
Or something like that, something.
Yeah.
That's literally all they do is focus on that.
Yeah, yeah, if I could sit next to the file, the copier, it'd be a lot easier.
Well, at that point, I would buy a scanner, not a flatbed. Because we have, there are, it's a lot of labor. And it just scans everything for you.
Well, that's what I did while I was still going through the planning board files, instead of just, you know, watching the paint dry or the paper scan, I would pop things in, go do something else, because I brought in a scanner, it's a printer scanner, it only scans. And started using that, and that was okay because I didn't need to babysit it too much, I could just plug it in and.
You brought your own.
Yeah, I brought my own, yeah.
And the town can probably purchase one for fairly cheap that can scan even larger documents, you see.
Yeah, you brought a bigger platinum with some of those old leather-bound books.
Yeah, because either you do a flat-screen one, or you go one that auto feeds, and you can do all, all the auto feed, and then you could get a bigger one for other things, but there's.
Well, even this, this one's okay for some big things, but not pretty.
Well, you, well, that, you got a pretty.
Yeah.
That'll slow you down.
But yeah, the speed of that one compared to the other one, amazing. But, then I have to stand there, because I have to babysit it.
So if you let me know what size pages you have, I'll look and see if I can find.
Okay.
The different size pages, because that's, that's gonna be the biggest obstacle, it's the size of the page.
Yeah.
Because we can either do a flatbread scanner, which shows it really cheap, no matter how big you go.
Oh, yeah.
Or you go with the auto scanner, which will do the pages and walk away and.
Yeah, front, back, forwards, backwards, something like that.
You had a big plan earlier, then?
No, I can see that. And then so return to department is another recommendation I make on all of these, so I broke out each department that seemed like it had enough filing to warrant being broken out. So we have the ambulance service, I don't know if that needs to be retained here or returned to them offsite. I did recommend returning it just to them offsite, I don't know why we have a need. There is an assessing drawer in there.
What?
Assessing drawer, it's for the assessor, but since that's hired out, why do they need a drawer here?
Well, we probably have multiple, something like that, people.
Well, yeah, there's old KRT was one of them, just as an example, that flies, that's right on the top of my head. But I looked through it, it didn't really look like there were a lot of things, it was old pickups, which I assume are the changes to everything.
Yeah, but once you've done the pickup, why do you need?
Exactly right, just toss it, they don't need a drawer.
Makes sense.
Broadband committee, I'm assuming that's outdated, but it has minutes, so it needs to.
Only two years ago. Good accomplishments task.
It was that recent, I'm surprised. Obviously, the budget committee is a bigger one, they need a dedicated drawer. Capital improvements can get their own, they can go in with the others. The cemetery board of trustees, they have nine drawers total, plus miscellaneous or a dollar worth place, and it really should get consolidated. Some of it can get disposed of, it is over ten years old, the cremation records, I think, and burial records, things like that. Some of those have passed. So that's what this appendix is, is it just makes individual recommendations for each one, I'm happy to go through them, but they're really almost carbon copies for the most part.
Right.
Really, the ones that need their own areas is select board, planning board, zoning board, cemeteries, and who else? I think that might be everyone, oh, finance.
Well, I see, it's interesting that the Warren Sewer Department has documents spread out, I would have thought they would all be down on Doric Street, but.
Nope.
They've got it all over the building.
Yeah. I do, I did find a bunch of those, and again, some of it was just financial stuff, so it would say like water, sewer. And again, some of it was just financial stuff, so it would say like water sewer and then it'd be a printout of whatever financials. I didn't read too much into it. That would have just added so much time trying to understand every form. So that's about seven pages of my recommendations for each committee. Water sewer, they should probably get returned to department for offsite filing, but I don't know if there's certain things that need to be kept here. That's the other thing, I don't know where there's overlap exactly.
Oh, just their tax stuff about the properties would be the only thing we need to keep here because the water and sewer department is its own thing, but the property is all the town's.
Okay, yeah.
That would be all.
What about like treasurer's reports for the water sewer department?
That should be there.
Water sewer department.
Okay, then, yeah, that's, I think that's mostly a lot of what I found was like treasurer's reports, things of that nature.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
Again, it's, it's a fight right now if they're their own entity or not.
Yeah, I know, that's kind of.
That's a gray area.
Yeah, gray area.
Well, we're not throwing any of them out.
No.
So Amanda, your basic, so we've got a tough agenda and you've got a lot for us to digest here.
Yeah, I really do.
What, what do you think that, if you were sitting on this side of this desk, what would be the three things that you would want to have done as a result of this right now today? More file cabinets?
Yeah, more file cabinets.
Consistent box labeling?
Yeah, absolutely.
And how, who would, how would you affect this? How would you get, who do you see? You've been here, you've talked everywhere, you know the lay of the land. How would you get this done?
I would delegate it.
And you can't say give it to Abby.
I wasn't gonna say Abby, but I was gonna say delegate. I would delegate it to the commissions and the committees and make them do it, so like.
That's gonna happen.
See, I don't understand how all of it works and how willing everybody is, so, or isn't.
Well, if they were willing to do it, it wouldn't be where it is.
That's also the point.
And if they knew how to do it, some of them would be willing, but they don't know how.
Right, so definitely I would think about making checklists and brainstorming things like that to help complete the files.
So if we, so, all right, let's, let's, let's follow, go down that rabbit hole. So I, as you all know, I agree with the checklist because you can get consistency. Even if it's spelled out wrong, at least you know you've done wrong.
And not every file will have everything in it, but we can figure that out on the checklist. It may not be present.
So, would you say we need to generate? So Jeremy's gonna focus on getting us more file cabinets.
Yep.
You would generate checklists and pass them out to the committees?
Oh, we could start there. I'd need to talk to them too, because I wanna see what they think they need, if that's at all possible.
Yeah, that's.
I know, I know for a lot of it, I can just talk to Abby, because she handles most of it.
You can talk to, well, some of these committees are, Abby doesn't handle.
Right, but I mean, the ones in, which is quite a few.
I mean, you could, you could, you could meet with the planning board.
Yeah.
The planning board, you'd probably get buy-in right away because you can already tell they've got heavily decent files.
Yep. They do have some files that don't need to be there too, like the lots don't exist anymore. They got merged, they never came to fruition, whatever. But other than that.
The ZBA would probably be a good one to.
Yes. Yep, I think they should be consolidated and organized as well next. Probably not a bad idea to start organizing some of the files before they go into their new location.
Yeah.
But the problem with a lot of that is, is it's the record retention policy that we really need. Because we can't get rid of things until we know exactly what.
We have to have a committee that says, yes, it's okay to throw this out.
Right.
And so that is organized by this board.
Right.
So according to this, RSA thirty-three A three, the committee includes municipal officers, select boardman, select board rep, town manager, which we do not have. We have a town administrator, totally different thing, can't put that one on there. And that's a lot of sense. So it's two people.
Well, I can definitely elaborate on that for you. I know police was recommended, I know in the specific RSA thirty-three A, it actually does say, there are other people, I wanna say the town clerk is one.
So that, I'm looking at it right here, at least what it says for the different stuff. The only one that actually says town clerk and stuff is forty-nine A, which is for larger cities and counties.
Okay.
But I have no problem asking other people to assist us with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could probably, you, you could do it just you and the TA, but you wanna have more buy-in and more participation. So, you know, logically, somebody from the select board, the TA, you need somebody from the planning board. You need to know what Alice wants saved out of the police records, you know.
Yeah, I would.
I, I, I would be very hesitant to touch of anything in there. You know, the checking account balance from nineteen thirty-two, whatever. But I don't know about the criminal stuff.
There is.
And I think the idea behind the committee is they'll have a front mark once it's done.
That's right, yeah. It's gonna be a lot of.
Well, and then, then you can make your decisions on how you're gonna, what you're gonna do. And then you can have.
You can go send someone.
You have your heart you want to do.
Just let someone go wild in there, wild, once you have your guidelines.
Spread it out on the table.
This is one of the RSA's that a lot sometimes are like, oh, I didn't know we had to do that.
And it's also super vague. There's like, here's a million things that don't apply to you, follow that. Like what about?
Some town webpages, you click on the committee, there's nothing there really.
Yeah. So the appendix two is just kind of something I put together for the future records retention committee. It discusses like what is a governmental record, probably a lot of things you already know about, certain legal considerations you need to take into your town when getting rid of documents, a schedule, labeling, best practices and destruction laws is on the back, just as an example.
So with the destruction, I understood the storage thing, but a destruction log, what I'm gonna do is say, here's a pile of bank statements.
Yep.
And this, I had these bank statements and on this date in this place, I burned them.
Exactly, yeah.
Shred them or whatever I did.
Yep, I've seen some town policies too, know like the town administrator will have to stand there and watch it get shredded and then sign off on it. Like I guess shredding services will give you a piece of paper saying like, yeah, I was here and it's all good.
Yeah, they give you the basically the same, we shredded four offices.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So that's another thing you could do.
Yeah.
So. As far as I, I had something else on my system, oh. What I, one thing I've been doing when I'm working basically at home outside of the office here is I've been indexing the A to Z administrative files. And so what I've done there is it's in an Excel sheet. I didn't put an example in because it looks just like your average spreadsheet on a piece of paper. However, you can search it, you can filter it, you can say, what documents does the planning board need to save for ten years? And it will pop it all out. So you can really narrow it down. So then you could hand the list to said department and say, this is what you need to save, this is what you have that you need to get rid of, do it. And I do intend to pass that off to the future committee. I'm still, it's a work in progress, I revamped it two weeks ago and I've been re-entering the data because I didn't like the way it was working. I couldn't filter it, so I figured out how to do that. And yeah, I guess my, I have questions, it would be, what would you like me to continue assisting with? Did you want me to continue? I plan on wrapping up the planning board merging, that should be done in about a week or two. I don't have Puja, the intern this week, due to health issues, she'll be back next week. So that should move things along, she can keep right up.
She works in the city of Keen.
Yes.
Does she, are there any observations she's made about differences between the way they do things and the way we do things? Other than, oh my god.
I've asked her, there hasn't been a lot, but she's come in with little things like, hey, in Keen, we save our request for proposals, our RFPs, six years plus one, so seven. I don't know why they break it up like that, but they do. And it's not just Keen, it's everywhere. I mean, in my recommendations, unfortunately, because that's what is out there. But yeah, she, for example, she said that, she alerted me to the fact that the city also has their own equipment disposal thing. Like you can buy, that been talked about to get file cabinets, that sort of thing. I didn't know that other towns and cities did that, so. But not a lot, I think everything's different, and she's focused on one department.
Sure.
So, which I think is mostly like collections or finance related, something along those lines.
We have that.
Yeah, I know, but she's mostly just in general filing right now.
Yeah, okay.
So yeah, I just basically was, I'm not exactly sure.
So you're, you're next, you're, you're gonna, you're carrying on with the planning board?
Right.
And the ZBA?
I figured I could move on to that next.
Yeah.
It's probably gonna be a lot of duplication that's found, so I might not even really have to merge that much, to be honest.
That would be good.
Because the ZBA and the planning board, they're like sister boards and overlap all over each other, I've noticed, so.
Are you gonna attend the planning board meetings? You might wanna contact on first if you're gonna do that.
I can, yeah, I can reach out to them and see if they.
Yeah, Kyle's on first, he's the chair.
Okay.
Yeah. Next Wednesday, when they meet at seven o'clock here.
Okay, Wednesday at seven, I can do that. And then after, yeah, so my question basically was after the planning boards merged, we can move on to the zoning board, but after that, it's, do you want me to keep working on merging the existing files, organizing a lot of general filing stuff?
Well, I would be, I would be most concerned about the administrative filing.
Yes.
I would wanna know that that is coherent.
Okay, that one, that's a big one, that's gonna take a lot of questions.
Well, I also think the litig, I'm just, this is what I think. The litigation needs some kind of organization.
Yeah, totally.
It should be whether, I think what you have is the year. I mean, who cares which lawyer did it?
Right.
And so it either is, either the town of Troy is a plaintiff or a respondent. So we should have things where we, which I'm sure there's very few things where we took actions against people. At the board where people took actions against us, probably aren't all that many really, but, well. You should, but that's what, you know, they should be organized in a way where you can say, two thousand nineteen, these people sued the town, these people the town sued.
Gotcha, so in that sense, we'd have to break up the legal folders a little bit to make that consistency, because it could be, say, whoever nineteen ninety-four, but it includes correspondence about, you know.
Well, I'm just talking about a way of filing them.
Right.
Organizing them, which side of the deal you're on.
Yeah.
The other thing is.
But I mean, the actual legal file itself can actually contain numerous topics. So it might not be town of Troy versus whatever, or someone versus the town of Troy. It could just be like, I wanted to ask if he wanted to come to my Christmas party, and that's in there for some reason.
Well, that you don't need.
Yeah, I know, but.
No, just legal actions against the municipality are the only things you need to keep permanently.
Right.
And suits and settlements, I believe it's actually ten years. I think I said permanently earlier, but it's.
No, no, according to this, any legal action against the municipalities, permanent, according to the other.
Any, period, man, that's pretty broad, so that's another thing.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not inviting inside at a Christmas party. It's the lawsuit. And it's just the stuff relevant.
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah. But there might be multiple things in there. Like I've noticed certain files will cover a whole year in like twenty-eight different topics. Anything they reached out to the attorney for, it's in there, is what I mean.
Probably.
So half of it might be able to get discarded, other, other parts are transient communications, which means for the purpose of doing business, and they can go once the business has been completed.
Right.
So, things like that can get tossed.
All right, so you know what you're doing next?
Um, just finishing up the planning board for now, and then I hope to have some direction after that.
And we know what we wanna, our takeaway on this is what we wanna do?
We need to find a board and get it going, our committee.
Yeah, yeah, so that was my question, kind of basically was what would you like me to do while we wait for the committee to be formed? Do you want me to pause? Do you want me to keep plugging away?
I think work, do the planning board stuff, because I don't think we're talking about six months from now.
I would like to finish that, there's no sense in pulling me when I'm two thirds of the way through it.
I know, I didn't envision the committee like replacing you, I think that's, yeah.
Okay, no.
No, I think they're gonna work with you.
Yes, and that's another thing, I thank you for bringing that up. I wanted to know, I'm willing to consult with the committee, I'm willing to meet with them, I'm willing to do a bunch of stuff with them once they exist.
That would definitely be my plan, because even if I'm on it, or one of these two are on it, whoever else you pick, we gotta learn.
Yeah, right, exactly, and it's like, I've been slogging away through the research and the RSA's, and that's another thing in my spreadsheet, my searchable sheet I mentioned. You can, it also references the RSA's, whether or not it's exempt from ninety-one A, any info I could find while keeping it as concise as possible. So hopefully it's helpful, otherwise I wasted a lot of my own time.
So do you find cabinets that we just picked up that can maybe lock in the room? And can give you each drawer? Yeah. Because if we're gonna do line some of the, I'm just worried about access.
No, file cabinets typically, you, you lock them, you lock, you lock the whole cabinet. But you're gonna have them in a locked room. So, I think.
Well, I'm just saying that's like, okay, so the planning board needs to go in and look for something, but they have their files in that room. They should only have access to their files.
Right. But I think, I think the whole issue of the files is, they really wind up under lock and key.
Right, I think.
And it's like, right, because right now, anybody can randomly go in and you could go right in that drawer.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get to, I think. So and the security of the files.
Right.
And the, the security aspect of it, so I mean, like when we start moving anything to that room, get it secured and if somebody needs to look through something, obviously they're gonna be either. They need to be walked out of.
Right.
Yeah. You mean a general member of the public kind of thing? Oh, yeah.
Like a general member of the public.
Random person.
To go down there.
Oh, yeah.
So you mean security wise, not like you can't see this much, or? I live in, if it's legal, it's gonna. No, so, I'm sure there's gonna be some stuff that, open cases or whatever, or files, it, you know.
Well, if you go.
Has not to be for the public, the stuff that.
If you go into the state library, you can, you can take out almost anything as long as you sit right here in this room with them watching it.
Well, that's basically what we're looking at, we need to have someone. So earlier, just on that, earlier today, somebody was in the file room and they were pulling files out. They should have had someone there watching.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
The only times that, obviously that I've seen people in there pulling files, I've been in there, but I know I'm not always in there.
You weren't in there, this was before you got here.
Yeah, I'm sure. I used that room as my little office, I can.
Oh, I do, that's why I know, and I know exactly who it is, and. Me too.
The code?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just worried about the physical security aspect of it.
Well, I think you need to establish the security protocols and then it becomes.
That would be part of the committee.
Responsibility for enforcing it, if nobody is, it's like anything else. If somebody else is gonna go out of their way to break the rules, you know.
Don't, don't, we put in the rules, they're gonna break them.
Right. But, I mean, right now, today, I mean, as everybody in this room knows, where you can go, those records from the town from the eighteen hundreds, you could, somebody could be, walk right from here, sit there like they're going to me and go open the appropriate door and.
Or climb over the wall.
I mean, when I first got here, one of my concerns was like key control, physical security, you know. And we're still working. Asset management, like what we have is bicereal numbers for all our assets, town owns. I mean, we have, still get to make that checklist, I mean.
Well, I think the files are more pressing, I mean, I think.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's all good things to keep into consideration though, I mean.
Yeah.
Something that the committee should address.
Much like the way the registry works.
Right.
So I guess going forward for now, I'll work on the planning board files, I'll attend that meeting next week and see if I can meet with them about.
I'll email and share and tell you what.
Sure, yeah, I'll email, I won't just show up.
I don't know, it's kinda fun to do that sometimes.
I bet.
Do, do that.
I'm sure they do. Do you guys have any questions? I know every time I just throw a ton of info at you and hope you get it.
It's good, Amanda, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
So let's go ahead and jump and get Dave out of here. So let's go ahead and jump and get Dave out of here.
You're not having a couple of problems.
He's just, he's.
Be quiet, we're gonna be here.
Go ahead.
Okay, so you guys have got the quotes?
Yep.
And did you look at them?
Yeah, I looked at them.
Um, the one I'd like to go with is the really cheapest um is the Young Care Interholt Dale out of New York. Um if that quote is for seven, seven of the Glock forty-fives it's the nine millimeter. Um Ford barrel with the hollow sign, um optic um is seven string light, T L R one weapon lights.
That's amazing, too, for T L R one, I got that.
Yeah. And seven of the Blackhawk holsters um for the blocks that will hold the optic and the light. Um.
Which is like a good idea.
They would be trading in seven weapons. And the reason to go to the nine millimeter and Mike will do it with the optics and the flashlight is it's cause um the optics, I've talked to other offices from other departments, like Fitzwilliam just went to them. Um Swansea just went to them.
Sheriff.
Huh?
The sheriff just did.
And the sheriff did, yes, and they, you know, we were with them, we deal with them all the time. And so if we got into an incident, our magazines will all fit each other, weapons, um and things like that. And I've talked to officers that have been on a while that, like the Fitzwilliam and Swansea where they say, they used to be a thirty uh thirty-six or thirty-two uh out of thirty-six qualifier.
Yeah.
Now they're thirty-fours and thirty-sixes, they say the optics are the most accurate and most, it's the way of
Way to do it.
The world. Um and so what they have rec- what they say they'll give us for our trade-ins um cause we have one um Glock nineteen, which is a nine millimeter. But we're gonna trade that in two to get the newer one. Um they're only gonna give us um two uh two ninety-five for that. Well, my, a lot of my guys want to buy their old forties and they're willing to pay three fifty for it. So I can put that money towards the um.
Would you need that in the motion for us to allow that, or can you do that?
Uh well, I I figure we'll talk about it, we can do both on okay and the amount and the purchase.
So I would move that uh we approve the purchase of seven new police department firearms, weapon lights and holsters from Amchar Wholesale for fifty-eight, eighty-six, forty-eight. And we authorize Troy officers to purchase their existing weapons at a price to be determined by the chief. And that may be paid back into the general fund.
You're kind of right, so. What's the the quote, the price you quoted is after they traded in the guns too?
Yeah, that's after we would trade in seven guns at the price they want to give us.
Oh.
Cause they wanted to only give us um two seventy-five for the.
Is that like trading in a car?
Yeah.
Like you trade it in for two hundred bucks and they sell it for a thousand?
So that's the total without the discount.
Okay, then I would amend that motion to say that we uh I would amend that motion to say that we offer all of those things that I already said that we, we allow the up to seventy, up to seventy-five hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents.
That's without the discount of the, because they took away the trade, I took away the trade amount.
Right, sixteen hundred and.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixteen hundred and seventy dollars.
But we'd still be better off if the, if the guys bought their guns.
Well, see, what I, well, right, it it and then put that forwards.
You're gonna have more, you're gonna have more, yeah.
That's what we need to be less than fifty-eight.
If they're paying two ninety-five and they're paying three thirty, three fifty.
The the amount, the the amount, cause what you would get from that would go into the general fund based on what I mean, so.
Oh, is that, so that's not, where's the, no problem.
We could put it somewhere and have a check written for the, the amount that we would like to put in the general.
Let me just fix my motion since it hasn't been seconded yet. Uh.
Which you might have to get fixed again, just so you know.
Okay.
My thing, my only concern is the hollow signs and how the lights, batteries, you need to supply batteries on top of that.
Well, the hollow sign is, I think they said it was good for like six years, so I got other years I can purchase the batteries, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And the, the lights.
The light.
All you have to do is go to January first and then I can buy the batteries next, next year.
Okay.
Be only because I put into, I put sixty-five in the equipment budget. I think I spent a hundred and twenty-five out of it, cause of the hard costs just to, I wanted these guns. So I still got like six, six or sixty-two hundred left in there.
Well, so let me amend my motion and say that any guns I've offer, I'm, we're authorizing the amount up to seventy-six hundred dollars before any discounts. And any, any purchases of guns by officers is to be credited back against the purchase. The money, the money being spent by the department for new equipment.
So all the officers want to buy the firearms or like is there one that they don't, that you could open up to somebody who we can legally own a firearm?
Oh, yeah, 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 we could do that.
So you wanna amend it again?
Yeah, add that.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Right, so any, any, any.
Wait for.
Any, I was wondering how they hadn't come up yet. So and any, any firearms not purchased by existing officers would be made available to any resident of Troy who can legally own a firearm. I'll send it.
You got that?
Jeremy?
Don't worry.
Make a, make a copy of it, okay?
It is further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, we got where we wanted to go, right?
Thank you for your patience, Dave.
Alright, no, no problem. I've been waiting for my blood sugar to go down anyway and that one chocolate shot it up like thirty points.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, okay. Alright, I got that new G seven.
Oh, really?
That tells you, I'm at one thirty-nine right now.
That is a tough.
He's got a console.
Your phone?
Oh, oh, okay, I got you, yeah.
I just got it, it's like
Fancy?
Awesome, but see now, I would, I had that one candy, now I kinda know, I'm learning. What not to eat.
What? You don't want any more cookies or cake?
I don't, no. Thank you though, thank you so.
Don't think about it, more blood pressure wants to, you only got a touch there.
Yes, yeah. I have the, also the um, it's called the, they put the two finger, the what is that called? Two fingers on it and gives you an actual E K T.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, I like that too. Alright, guys. So yeah, somehow we can meet up and I'll, you can show me how I get that.
Maybe you know where I live.
Yeah.
I'm home.
So you got, you guys go on that thing tomorrow?
I am. I, I don't want to, cause I would already rip into them, I've already ripped into them once because I'm not following the process. But then we also have to notice it as a meeting because that two of them show up and drop back in. And it's not a big matter, so.
Okay, well, I'll see you tomorrow.
Hope you didn't have any plans to. You just wanted some excitement.
Oh, I love this shit.
Do you really?
Have a good night, guys.
Have a good one, you too. You know Mike and Swansea?
Oh, yeah, my friend.
Did you, so the Sentinel did it right up about um six months ago or whatever, it's pretty good or whatever, but we, we both entered the field at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a little bit older than him, but pretty close, we had grad school class together.
Mm-hmm.
And uh the article was pretty nice right up and he's like, oh, I get, he's lost some of his hair and now he's ten years older, he's been doing it for a while, so he gets, he doesn't get the same looks anymore than he used to or whatever, but and he, and I knew this coming in before I read it, but he'll watch other towns, he puts out the article, but he watches other towns, I'm like, dude, you sound like a weirdo. But he knows what's going on in each town, you know, which is a good thing. And he's been there a while.
Yeah, yeah.
He's got his first board member, he's had, he just had his first board changeover of a member, he had the same board for.
Oh, right, right, right.
I said, well, I said, that's how life works, sorry, mate.
Yeah, yeah, that guy, was it, that guy uh owns a restaurant, I've got a lot to.
Oh, yeah, Jimmy Tim Pesta.
Right, right.
He's never even been to us like for the meeting and now he are one.
That sounds familiar.
You?
Yeah, I never attended one of them. I was on the buddy committee.
I think Jimmy will be a fine selectman. It doesn't work the way you think.
It definitely doesn't.
I would always use an education.
Hmm.
I'm gonna circle.
I don't know anybody who, who ever complained, you know, that used to go to town meetings and complain and whatever and then got elected.
Right.
Who didn't say, oh my god.
Shit, oh my god.
Yeah.
I didn't realize.
We have to do that, so I'm gonna circle back to board member comments, get those out of the way real quick. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and start this time. Do you guys, are you guys okay with me sending a letter up to all the different boards, committees, people telling them they need to get together with C I P and get the stuff done that's required so we can get the ball, the rest of the ball rolling?
Well, I think that's such a good idea that I would also ask that you establish a records protection committee. I don't think it needs to be a cast of a thousand.
I was thinking three to five.
That's what I was thinking too, and you know, there are some people it's relevant and there's some people it's not relevant and it's really just create the rules.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I would, I can make a motion to a factor, you could say you think it's a good idea or a bad idea.
I think it's a good idea and honestly, I don't think I need a motion for you to vote on it right now. Now, when I come together with who I think should be on it.
Then we should vote on it.
Then we'll vote on and agree on that part, but yeah, I'll think about it and I'll come together for like three, two weeks. With that, but the main thing is, we've been having a lot of pushback on C I P, it's just people not thinking it's
Oh.
Worth it, but
Right.
if they want a new fire truck or a new police cruiser, we need to put away a proper amount of money. We've learned this, that prices are just going up.
And all we've asked for so far is to show up.
I know, that's the worst part.
Hey, we got John's stuff, which is good.
Well, I believe we got uh Dave's stuff too, he was our guinea pig. So it's been quite a fun thing to go around with them, but I'm gonna fire off a letter and just, you know, be very
Yeah.
polite but forceful and say, get it done, please, or else.
My intention.
I can't, I honestly can't say, if they don't do it, I can say it. I honestly can't support them wanting money when we don't have a goal of what the cost is gonna be. You know, it's put away twenty thousand dollars for twenty years for use on, why are we putting away money for? Dude, it doesn't need to be forty thousand for a new fire truck, cause we know how much those things cost, almost a million dollars for a new one.
Hmm.
So.
A lot of bond work, bond, on the pond.
Yeah, that's better, that's what I was thinking too, it's always, it should be bonds, but you wanna talk about the recycling center since that's your? So yes, um as many of you have heard, the recycling center will start, first off, we'll start with the good news. The recycling center will start being open on Tuesdays.
Yeah, what time?
From noon to six P M, it is just a trial for now, it might adjust the time depending on how busy or slow it is. Uh but it will be open, um the next thing is there, the new fees. The transfer station has been losing money, it's been in the red for however many years.
Definitely years.
So this is to help it get back into black, I know a lot of people are complaining, well, the, the fee for the sticker is too much. It's two years, twenty dollars, there are some towns that charge you a hundred dollars a year for the sticker. So two years for twenty bucks is not bad. Um some of your other fees, talk about, we're trying to promote using the town bags, they are in rolls of ten. As far as I've been told, they're large and small and they each have a different cost, but to, you know, to take them to the to the transfer station, you've already paid the fee to drop them, you've paid the fee when you buy the bag. Black bags, things like that, you're gonna pay a fee and it does go up because, as again, transportation should be making money with all the recyclables it gets, it's still not making money.
Right.
Um oil, we have to start charging for that, it's no longer free to dispose of, thank you to the state, because the state put in laws and regulations that we can no longer just dispose of it by handing it out to the public to use in their waste uh oil containers or things like, or uh heaters and things like that, we now have to pay a fee, so that is gonna be passed on to the town, otherwise the town pays for it anyways in taxes. And it's not very cheap to get rid of that, to waste oil, um other fees are going up. Beds, tires, everything is just going up because it is getting more expensive to dispose of these things. And with all the new rules and regulations that are coming in for different chemical makeups, uh P F O S and all that, it's getting even more expensive because now the companies that are picking it up for us have to check that stuff as well. Effective, and it is effective as of today, actually. Uh so the new fee, we've posted it all over the website, um it'll be, there will be signage done down at the dump, or sorry, the transfer station shortly, I might have to convince the person who's creating those signs to do it, so. Uh, anyone else you can make up for that?
No, just stickers are required, uh the stickers are located here at the town clerk's office and down at the transfer station. So you got the new stickers for twenty-five and twenty-six, those are twenty dollars still. And the remaining of this year for twenty-three, twenty-four are still at the two dollar yet amount. So if you don't have a sticker, you're gonna be asked to purchase them or bring your recyclable someplace else. And I don't mean some back road, back trail like that, um so. So I got the, the recycling center.
They should be getting their signs from the state too.
Yeah.
The signs should be coming like any day now.
Yeah, the state has signed it and then there's some that uh I'm working to create for them, gotta get them some signed boards and stuff like that.
What's signed, you mean the big new?
The new fees. New fees.
Oh, the new flyers. The state will give you signs saying, oh, this is where this goes and stuff. Free, we just usually probably haven't taken advantage of it.
Other signage, like we're gonna put one on the back on the oil that says it's two dollars per gallon.
Two dollars per gallon for clean oil, three dollars per gallon for contaminated oil.
Yeah, cause the quote we love to get rid of all the oil we've collected.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's. The state comes in, we're.
That's exactly why we're doing, we gotta cover what we have. Um.
Big one.
So if you have any questions, you can ask the nice gentleman at the transfer station or you can come in and ask here, but you're probably not gonna get an answer fast for some things, cause it's a new thing, we're gonna start charging like we're supposed to, cause these policies have been in effect for
For years.
Years, this is not news.
And we're just enforcing it finally because it's, like I said, it's bleeding and we needed to.
Well. And these fees are posted on the website and be located here as well.
You know, in this case, this is where we we, the select board, have been hesitant to raise fees because we understand it's inconvenient and it's expensive, et cetera. In much the way that the water and sewer department didn't raise fees because it's a cost for people. However, it is a real cost, there is no free lunch here. And so we haven't raised the fee for a dump sticker in thirty years that I know of. So what you could get for two dollars in nineteen ninety-one is a lot less than, a lot different than what you get for two dollars now.
Well, the worst part is that doesn't even cover the stickers.
Well, this is my point, you know, the stickers cost a half a cent a piece in nineteen ninety-one, now they're half a buck a piece, so you know, I really think we did the best, we have done the best we could and I think we probably should think in terms of particularly where we're now entering, possibly entering a period of ongoing inflation. We, we heard from another department earlier in non-public, you know, there's some of these things, this is just gonna be the way it's gonna be until it, the economy settles down. So we have to. So, we have to, we, charging the same fee as we did in nineteen ninety-one isn't really isn't feasible.
And we, and we did our homework in terms of, so you did put the towns charging.
We're actually still below what most towns are doing. Like I said, a hundred dollars a year and some towns. You know, we're still probably right there at the low, twenty, lowest twenty-five percent for just the stickers alone.
If you move to a bigger city and you have curbside, you're still paying for it, just in a different way.
Well, they're paying for it in a different way, sure.
Yep.
So. That was my comment.
All right. Curtis, board member comment, board member comment?
Uh, just coming from the rec department, uh, the community dinner for the month of August is August seventeenth. That's the five dollar to-go meals. I do not know what we're cooking as of right now. It's, uh, to be determined. Uh, and it's from four to six on the seventeenth of August. Uh, as for the planning board, we don't meet until next Wednesday at seven o'clock here. Uh, can I get one of you guys to cover for me because I will be out of town?
Sure.
So you?
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you. Um, other than that, uh, tomorrow, there's gonna be a walkthrough with the planning board, uh, for the Dort Street and, uh, Big Little Hill Solar Projects Proposals. Uh, once again, the selectmen have not given any building permits for these proposals. So, the planning board is going through and doing their planning, seeing what, if it's feasible, if they're following the rules, you see what they wanna do.
Did we even have anything submitted to us?
We have not. So it's, they started with the planning board. They did not come with the selectmen first. So as of right now, they do not have a building permit. It's all tentative. Um, there, it's information gathering.
They started with the planning board and then they went to the Conservation Commission. Completely blew us over, even though I told the Conservation Commission that they really should start with the selectmen. They said, we don't think we have to.
Okay, well.
So even after all this planning and everything that goes through, the, we as a selectmen, we can say, hey, no, we're not gonna give them, we don't want solar out in those areas. We could say that, doesn't mean we, we are or we will. We will wait until the proposal is pitched to us. Um, as of the last meeting, there were several citizens that came in and were very unhappy with the Big Little Hill Solar Project. Uh, little to no concern with the Dort Street East and West Solar Projects. So, uh, there was a public hearing or, yeah.
Where would they put it on Dort Street?
Uh, just after the, the Highway Barn.
Yeah.
But before the water and sewer, it'd be left and right.
The new of the land.
Uh, the private, all the land that they're proposing to put on the solar is all privately owned. And the company, Re, um, Rewild has already contacted the property owners and have agreements that touch all this up going forward. There's a lot of information. The packets for each, for each project is, you know, five, six inches thick. Uh, so. Uh, so, there was questions whether, whether or not the public is allowed to come and do a walkthrough with us. I am saying no as of right now because these landowners did not get permission for private people to go in there and start walking on their properties. As far as I'm aware, uh, the property owners were notified and asked that tomorrow, we, the planning board and, um, the police fire, um, certain entities that would be involved with this be allowed and we got permission for us owning, so it's not open to the public. So if you do show up, you might be told, hey, you can't go onto the property because it's privately owned property. It's not town property. Just so you're aware.
I, I gave you my part.
You have the house to say?
I, no, I, I don't wanna hold a meeting up.
All right. We'll jump on down, we'll go back to new business, uh, the town website upgrade options.
Well, why don't we hear from Mr. Clark? Cause he's been patiently sitting here for hours too.
Oh, hi, Mr. Clark. He's entertaining. How can we help you?
Well, as you know, uh, Troy Ward's selectmen voted to join Chester TV, excuse me, Chester TV.
We did?
Waiting yourself there, Gary.
What's that?
I think if they don't exist.
Community Power. Um, and, um, you are now on, um, we're, we're starting the, the timeline scheduled to launch, um, uh, the Community Power Project, um, on October first. Okay, you're in wave four with, um, the town of Hinsdale, which is county and fifteen other towns across the state that will launch on, uh, October first. In order to do that, you have to have a public hearing or a public information session. To inform, uh, the residents of your actions and what they can, you know, what their, uh, what their options are for Community Power.
Should we call it a public information session or not?
Yeah, it's not a public hearing because, uh, because it's not really.
Some people, the words matter.
Yeah, we're not gonna take any action. It's only, it's only for, for.
Well, we're having, this is, this is why I suggested we have it in conjunction with the, uh, public, cause we're not taking any action there either.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Is that bad though?
That's August twenty-ninth.
Is that what it is? We can move that out since, um, we haven't heard from DOT.
Okay, so, part of the timeline is, okay, we're going to the printers with the letters that we're gonna be mailing out to all the, all of the, uh, rate payers and all of the communities.
Sure.
Tomorrow.
Oh.
Uh, and so the, the, the window of that the, according to RSA nineteen one eight. The timeline, uh, has to, it has to happen between August twenty-first and twenty-eighth. The public information session, because it has to be fifteen days.
Twenty-first.
Within fifteen days of when the, the letter is mailed.
Scheduled for?
You'll be meeting again on the twenty-seventh.
So if we do it at five PM, instead of six thirty, just do it as.
Well, the regular cycle of meetings is fifteen.
It's my, it's one of my experiences, it takes five, ten minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
But so we, this, I go, we can do it in conjunction that our, our already planned road meeting, means it meets your criteria.
Maybe the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, that's the twenty-ninth.
Uh, we can't do the twenty-ninth. Twenty-ninth is outside of the fifteen days. Uh, you know, cause the law says you have to, you have the whole republic.
So basically it has to get a day that you don't.
Within fifteen days of the mailing and that's already set because it's more than just Troy.
Yes, it's the, the whole world.
Yeah.
So, the fifteenth is too early.
Fifteenth is too early, yeah, but window is twenty-first to the twenty-eighth and your meeting in there is on the twenty-second.
Our meeting there, our reg, no, our regular meeting, we don't have a regular meeting dinner.
Oh, you don't?
No, we, we had the hearing, kind of, for the twenty-ninth, cause it's a bi-week. Obviously, we only, we only need twice a month.
So, do we wanna try and schedule something on like a Tuesday?
Well, we've got it set for the twenty-second. Well, times it, yeah, it's, it's thirty.
I'm out of town.
You're in Elmira for the race.
Yes, that's a word.
We have to tell the.
You can't do it the twelfth, the Tuesday, you have to do it Wednesday, because the twenty-first.
Well, why, why don't we just do it on the twenty-eighth and move the other meeting back?
We, we'll get it done soon.
Huh?
Here?
Yeah, we could do the, move both of them back. I don't wanna meet on the twenty-eighth and end the twenty-ninth. Why don't we move them both back to the twenty-eighth?
I mean, we already moved the roads once, right?
Yeah.
Although we don't, I was gonna.
That work?
The Wednesday?
Yeah.
Good. At, uh, what time?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock?
So the fire will do Community Power and then.
And then five fifteen will do the roads.
Yeah, okay, that works. All right, so, uh, yeah, okay, so we'll go to the, the printer, uh, with that information, uh, uh, tomorrow. It'll, the mailers will, will come out, uh, uh, the, the week before, twenty-first. Uh, people in town will be receiving it, uh, the nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, depends on the mailers, whatever. And, um, that will comply with all the necessary timelines.
Regulatory follow-up. The, uh, who does the printing? I mean, how do you?
I'm not sure.
Oh.
I'm not sure. It's a standard, it's a standard letter and they, and they do the, the bulk mail thing too.
Well, no, and I, 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 I got them, uh, for properties I managed in like, all of a sudden, a whole bunch of different towns. It was a, last time you probably did this. I think Swansea and Winchester were all at the same time. Does that sound right?
Yes, they were, yeah.
Yeah.
They were on wave, uh, two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Well, that sounds exciting.
Okay, so I'll schedule that and, um, um, I'll send you an email to, to verify it and then, uh, notify CBCNH tonight.
We don't have to do a newspaper ready.
No, you just need to put it on the agenda. You know, you, you need to notice it.
We need to notice them.
So, so that it's a legal meeting, yeah, you know.
I'll probably do a separate posting, cause that's an info session. But, but yeah, it'll be posted as well for me too. I mean, I just don't want somebody to get the wrong impression, but they might anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
You wanna stay for the rest of the fun?
Pardon me?
You wanna stay for the rest of the fun?
That's correct.
Hopefully we can hide it in some.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, uh, um, well, the county just went through the Glock thing.
Yeah.
You know, and the, the only thing we did differently was, uh, uh, not offer it to the general public. But, whatever, whatever. But I think the sheriff, no, I think the sheriff though, you, you gotta talk to the chief, he's like, I think the sheriff, uh, is getting five hundred from his deputies for, for the old guns. But I don't know if they're different guns.
They pay better.
And they pay better, yeah.
So, on, on, on that subject, since you're here, how with the, with, with the county EMS service, we're seeing down here where we operate our own, kind of, and I'm, and I, from what I've been told over in Concord, you know, that it's, it's a, it's a highly competitive world for people who are EMTs of the very kinds. Uh, there's a guy, I'm told, there's a guy in Swansea who's an EMT and he, he, he signed on for Lebanon. And he makes the commute for his shifts because they pay that much better. Is that, whether that's true or not, I mean, what's the county looking at? I mean, do you guys?
We're, we're fully staffed right now.
Yeah.
We, we were down, I think, three, uh, last month, but, but we're fully staffed. We're trying to bring people in from outside of the region. Uh, because, you know, we realize that it's competitive and if we just start going like this.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what we're seeing.
You know, uh, you know.
Jaffrey's gotta notice out, Peterborough's gotta notice out, Northfield's gotta notice out.
We're just gonna steal.
Spin them around, right.
That, that, that isn't, you know, so we made an effort to go, go outside. We get a lot of people, uh, from Massachusetts, uh, from New York State.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure exactly how Kim May is doing that as her personal person.
Yeah.
But she's being successful in marketing out there. So that brings in talent, uh, from, uh, from the outside and they're actually starting to buy houses here and starting to, you know, make a career of it here. Cause we're really, you know, we, we thought about that a lot, uh, when we were first starting it.
Yeah.
Cause that was the problem, is we had a shortage.
That's the only, you know, yeah, yeah.
And, and that, you know, that's never good because then our pay scales are never.
Right.
You know, they're always skewed and everybody's just doing this.
Yeah, well, that's what we're seeing in the town. So you think you're stable for now?
Yeah, yeah.
Close enough to it.
Well, you know.
Yeah.
It's a mess. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
We're working now on, on trying to get Medicare rates, uh, higher.
Yeah, so.
We, we just, matter of fact, we just went to Tampa and met with national people, uh, to try to get legislation.
That's a reimbursement rate to go on. Uh, that's historically dreadful to me.
It is. They raised it. Um, they raised it by about seventy bucks, um, some time ago. But it's still, it's still nowhere near the cost of what it, what it costs.
We've asked to build the, uh, that the insurance companies would, instead of sending it to the consumer, they would send it directly to the ambulance service.
Yeah.
Any benefit from that here or?
Oh, yeah.
That is.
That's, that's a great, a great help.
Yeah.
Uh, because we were leaving a lot of money on the table. You'd be surprised how many people, they get a check from their insurance company. They don't give it up. They don't realize, hey, they still owe this money.
Right.
Okay, and, you know, uh, our collection agencies and all that, you know, having to go after.
Well, the, the collection agency only gives you, you know, ten cents on the dollar or thirty generous.
I mean, it's been, it hasn't been that long that it's been in effect.
No, it hasn't.
But it's, uh, already, it's already, you know, it was a great move, you know, thank you for, I would be honored to.
Oh, no, well, it was my committee, so. I did not write it, but I, they did not wanna pass it.
Oh, the insurance companies?
Well, no, the insurance companies opposed it and the member, a lot of membership opposed it on both sides. And we had the EMT services from, if we think we have it bad here, go up the door. They're, they, they have, there's one hospital and it's, no matter where you put the ambulance service, you're a, you're an hour away. Cause if I have a heart attack here, I gotta drive over there half an hour and then turn it back around and.
Well, the good thing about the, the ambulances today, the way they're, the way they're, they're supplied is that you're bringing emergency room.
You're really, yeah, you're really, you are.
So, um, in, in a lot of cases, you're not, you're not even transporting anymore, right? Um, because you're, you're able to take, stop or bleeding and take care of the situation at home. Um, and then, you know, not have to race back to the hospital, so.
Yeah, but you still have to get there and you still, what if there's one here and one here? Well, Os County's a big place.
Oh, yeah, there's nothing out there either. It's, with four towns.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I haven't met you before, Terry Clark, County Commissioner.
Curtis Hopkins?
I'm Curtis. Okay, so, uh, now you. All right, we're talking here.
I mean, stuff will be the same, we, I don't know. I don't know. I don't either, it's probably. All right, so, continuing on, that was the, I know, somewhere, gee, so we're going, going, that, going back to four C.
Down the website.
So our annual agreement is up for the vendor that we currently, currently use. The website we have right now is called a non-responsive format, where like, it's a picture. It's not great, yeah. So, part of the discussion with them is they will upgrade us to a responsive format, which would mean a complete website redesign, which is examples in that packet for you. I realize it wasn't budgeted for, so it's not ideal, but, but what was budgeted? Just the annual amount, which right now it's here a year and it's a six percent increase. Looking at some of the other vendors and talking to other towns, some of like Civic Plus is one of the companies and they're like Paul the Rock from, from under towns and like saying, you owe us thousands more than you normally would, but you can see from the quotes that the current vendor is a much cheaper option. But again, it's, it's, it'd be, you know, almost nine hundred dollars more this year. And then going forward, um, just like it is now, it'd be a six percent increase, but I think in coordination with the filing and the digitizing of records, I think it would be helpful to have. I'm, I'm envisioning like access to, to like property records and files where the staff can easily get it and then like in your shoes, like being at home, rather than having to save all your emails and downloads and then you have like a portal you can log into on the website and have all the stuff at your fingertips, planning board. So, it's big picture visionary type thing, but.
Well, I think it's a good idea, but I'm concerned about
Yeah.
having, uh, I'm concerned about having the money to do it. Is this something that we would be better off to build into next year's budget?
So, yeah, an ideal one, yeah, yes, it's a hundred dollars.
What's the, what's the, other than the fact that it's a really good idea, what's the driver that we need to do it right now today?
Just kind of in coordination of the other project, but yeah, there's no precedent to do with.
Oh, oh, the, with the, uh.
Filing.
Filing.
So it's nine hundred dollars this year, eight hundred eighty-two dollars additionally this year, and then next year it goes another six percent, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, costing.
So, so, so another, so it's what it is, an eight hundred eighty-two dollars total this year in additional costs?
Yeah, cause I'm assuming we're gonna be at least signed on to keep our website. Because technically we're already, we're capacity or whatever.
Yeah.
So we can do nothing and just leave it as is and then next year's budget season, talk about this and the prices will probably be pretty similar. So it includes a total review of the website year one and then year four that.
So you can't forget.
But yeah, it's not impressive.
I would, I would move that we, uh, accept the proposal to revitalize the website now. Based on the contract given to us.
So you're supporting?
I'm supporting me, do, doing the update.
So, sure. So I thought. So next year's will be with the six percent would be like nine hundred dollars more.
Yeah.
Would be a little bit more than that at all.
We have to remember that when it comes budget season and put that in the, for that, what the total is, what we think.
In terms of like document storage and stuff, like, maybe more.
Yeah, yeah.
So my company, we just actually are doing the same thing and there's a ten percent increase each year. We use software and.
Yeah.
I have two softwares that I use that we're paying twenty plus thousand a year.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
I'll second. All right, any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next on our beautiful to-do list is the Historical Society check request for Music on the Crap Fair Common.
I move that we approve the check request for four hundred dollars to the Historical Society.
I'll second. And this is the one that was originally canceled.
Yes, back on, uncancelled.
Uncancelled, yeah.
Luckily we held on to the check.
Right, okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we uh rebate the taxes in the amount of sixty-four dollars and four cents on map five lot six.
Sixty-four nineteen.
This is a error caused by uh an interest error calculation on B M S I.
Yeah.
Sixty-four dollars and nineteen cents.
That's what I said, is it?
You said four cents.
Oh, 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 sorry, I was looking at the wrong place.
amended, uh, second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we accept the check in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and three dollars and eighty-eight cents from the state of New Hampshire. As block, which is highway block ramp money due in, it's a July payment.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Already did add, already did that. We have a building permit, it's got one, and a driveway permit.
Twenty-seven Central Square.
I think you know why that's. That's the cozy touch.
Cozy touch, yeah.
More fenced in between the other neighbors.
Oh, oh.
Once I realized it was two.
Oh, yeah.
Picture of that. Very last page. Probably page four of the last page.
Sure. I don't blame him a bit.
Actually made that comment at that moment before the.
Four foot long fence.
Six feet high.
That's thirty-five yards for a fence wall. So, um, they just have to stay one foot on their inside of their property line so they can do maintenance on the other side according to our ordinance.
Yeah.
They can't go on the property line, just so they're aware.
Well, we'll make that. I think you wanna write that on the permit.
Yeah.
So they've got ad fence between property and neighbor's property, front right, side of building, twelve feet long. I think right after that, whoever wrote this out needs to add, must be placed one side, one foot inside property line.
Or adhere to the town's fence ordinance.
We'll make it easy on Curtis.
Aye. Sounds good.
Yep. Uh, you making motion?
To do it.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry. It's a long one. All right, this next one is a uh post and beam uh bond built on concrete pad. Twenty-eight by thirty-six. Uh, it'll be fifty feet off the road and seventy feet from the property lines. Uh, we've had it for a little bit of time, but we were waiting for them to get us the drawing.
We just dropped those off the other day.
And they just dropped them off. Beautiful sketches.
Yeah, I was trying to get the information for these before they come to the board, rather than having come up with an agenda and say, oh.
Oh, it is being dealt by.
Yes.
Okay.
That person, yes.
Some like our work.
Uh, good work. Yeah.
Looks like a pretty good one. My fee was paid. Correct?
Yeah.
Um, I gotta confirm that, I don't.
Says it was. Here.
Doesn't say paid.
No, you just you phrase.
Oh.
Obviously we won't issue it until you pay. And I had to remember it because they got doubled up. That's why I just couldn't remember the name of that street.
Carl, tax us current on this one too, do you know? We just have a bag, no clue. We don't usually check that for much, like. Well, we, we used to, it's just, it's one of those things that kind of just swelled to the cracks. So verification of payment and taxes paid.
Subject to.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, so I, I would move, I would move that we approve it, subject to verification of taxes being paid and what else, Curtis?
Uh, the fee.
The fee, the, the permit fee being paid and the uh taxes being current on the property.
I'll second. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, um, a driveway permit for map thirteen lot one.
Has John signed off on this?
Yeah, so what happened was, I emailed him a copy, he signed that one to the, long story short, he came in after and signed it, so he's already looked at it, bro, we actually built it up together.
John?
You just don't have the signed version, the signed version is in the folder.
Okay.
Because the, the husband actually came in and said, I wanna do it right, please help me, and I was like, okay, let's do it.
All right, so I move that we approve the John specification for driveway permit uh on map thirteen lot one. As approved by the road agent.
I'll second.
They know that you're gonna say.
There it is.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I meant to, I meant to ask them, right now, um, the welcome to Troy signs like regular, so I don't know what their plans were, but.
Then it's.
Oh, so then.
That's, that's the Route twelve, the quarry site's coming down this way.
No, no, but I, I can make a valid point, well.
Should we go there?
That, so the welcome to Troy sign is in the right way, so that's not an issue, other than I don't know that that's a good location for the.
Right, driveway.
Well, well, it's there, that's the state's decision. I think that the welcome to Troy sign might wanna be up by Gatemount Road.
Yeah.
So, we should, we should talk to John about that. Uh, who, who installed them?
That's what I was gonna ask next, who installed them and how do we move them?
Before us.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a pretty heavy.
I remember they went up, but I don't remember who did them.
That's granite. Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's just set up fence post.
Yeah. Hostile did it, you know.
Yeah.
Excavator.
I don't know how, maybe those are how they do the base ants.
You take the, um, you, the screws, the brackets bolted in, so you take it off. I think, I think.
Those are all just welded.
Hmm?
Those are all just welded.
No, not, not the bolts into the granite.
Yeah, well, I don't think we removed that, because they're rusty and if we remove them, they probably won't go back in.
Just like that.
If you, if you, one of the thing, you take the whole thing out of the hole, take it as a whole.
Yeah, just put a strap around it.
Probably not that much heavier with the sign, right?
What'd you say?
Not that much heavier with the sign than without it.
No, a little more awkward.
Right, alright. Sure, John would love to.
Well, I think, I think we should, we, I think we should, not tonight, but.
Right, yep.
We should put our thinking caps on and consider where, where it gets closer to the village, farther away, other side, what have you.
I know it can be where it is now, but it's ideally break it up.
Well, yeah.
Hey, they moved it.
They don't attempt now.
They were able to back an RV through it without hitting it, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I watched and I, I almost got out and said, hey, do you need a hand? All right, so next is old business, town hall window replacement quotes.
So I would ask that we continue to leave this on the table in a back way. Um, I do have a small portion of it I wanna discuss as non-public, but um, other than that, I would think that we're gonna need to. I'm, I'm working on what I was charged with, which was to get a comparison of the, to try and make these bids same to same. And so I'm working on that. So, if, if we're all, if you guys are in agreement with that, that would be helpful.
Yep, it's not pressing, okay.
Goo to the meat.
Okay.
Recent manifest.
I move that we approve the payroll checks dated seven twenty-nine twenty-four in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred ninety dollars and twenty-three cents. The checks, paychecks dated eight-five of twenty-twenty-four in the amount of twenty-two thousand six hundred thirty dollars and ninety-five cents. I move that on the accounts payable, we authorize the seventy-five thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-one cents from six-four. These were journal entries and housekeeping from uh ACH payments, January through May. They should have actually been posted earlier, so they show up as AP now, but they were actually paid out earlier. Uh, accounts payable on seven twenty-two of two hundred dollars. Accounts payable on seven twenty-two of twenty-seven thousand ninety-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Uh, accounts payable on seven twenty-five in the amount of two hundred and five thousand one hundred nineteen dollars and fifteen cents. Which includes a July school payment of one hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars and nine cents. A two hundred dollar accounts payable on July thirty, twenty-ninth. And on July first, today, three thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and fifty-one cents.
August first. I'll second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the non-public meeting minutes from July eighteenth. As submitted.
I'll second. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I move that we approve the July eighteenth public meeting minutes as submitted.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Chrissy finished her very tough minutes from the special lobby.
Record two minute. Okay, we've got some board correspondence here. Um, the first one from Senator Sharvey.
Yeah, I thought Dick had replied that kind of interview before, but.
Well, it was sort of a different.
Yeah.
Uh, matter. What I had said is.
Some of the candidates.
About the candidates forum, and did we set the night? Um, I know we voted to set the night, what, what, what was it that was an unanswered question about?
Kyle needed to tell us if that's, if you wanted to keep the same rules or change them.
Okay, well, can you confirm that? I thought, I thought when Carl, when Kyle left here, we had all talked about it. And he agreed that he was gonna.
I'll just confirm.
Same rules.
Yeah.
I thought we settled that.
We did.
Yeah, okay, but you can confirm.
So do we want?
And that's up to Senator Ricardi.
Okay.
And just tell everyone what meetings are, anyone she'd like to attend, if she doesn't wanna attend the candidates forum, but. Probably.
Probably see ball.
Can't watch the.
Our campaign employees working.
Okay, going on to the administrative report.
Uh, I just wanted to check in if the board had any direction or any thoughts on what they wanna do with the public works structure, so. I know it's not, it's not on top of the list of issues that we have.
Well, it, it's in the category, it's, it would be important, but I think firstly, I'd like to go through the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is some, it's a homework for us to read through.
Um, yeah, for vendors permit, I, I found in the minutes that July of last year, there was discussion about bringing it up and reviewing it again later.
Doing what?
Bringing up the ordinance and the application to review later, I don't think that was ever done.
Last time we had someone going door to door knocking.
Last July.
That we approved last year, the same type of situation we approved this year. We were gonna go through and.
Oh, yeah.
Change it.
Just wanted to see if the board wants to review that down the road. Definitely not to have tomorrow.
Let's see if it's a problem, that sounds, comes up.
Um, and C is the, um, the property card, so I've been in conversation with that, I'm sorry about it. I happened to go on their website today and found that they added us, so. Notifying us to that, whatever, but right now it looks like they're just limiting, but quite a bit of information of the cards and I just gotta finalize with them. How to import their data to ours and we're good, but already updated the website with the links. You can go on there and find your property cards. But like, not all the photos are there and like, well, you know, but they're getting there.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of them reaching out to us and telling us exactly what they think to our website, so.
Okay, well, and you're working on it?
Yeah. And then in terms of the maps, um, right now I need to find out, export the data from our assessing software to get a list of what the changes were made. And then get that over to the company to start the town hall, so.
Well, now, what, what's the story on paper maps versus all digital?
We can still be paper. The, the, the main issue was that we're still on the PDF version, not the GIS, so that, but we agreed last week we were gonna do this last update with our current company and then.
Right.
Decide what we're gonna do as a whole thing there.
There actually assigned John an extra little task to look at GIS mapping. They have, we're, we're already paying for at the water and sewer department.
Yeah.
Where they're going to be paying for it and John would like to get off as well. And everything works together, so I tasked John with getting it from the companies and do it.
Do the whole board wax.
Yep, whole towns, cuz I'm.
That's like the hunters after the tap, right?
Yep, kinda like that, except it's more for, this'll tell, they'll be able to go out and say, okay, there's a pipe right here, and be able to paint it with the GPS and then.
Sure.
Don't know, hey, we know where all the pipes are, instead of spending six days looking for a pipe. And not finding it, and then finding it, you know, a month later.
Well, it's like when I asked John for road files, he said, I don't have any, he's like, oh, God. And I, I don't think it's like, by law you have to, you should have, that's something we should try to work on as we. It's alright.
Um, jumping back, what do you think that should be ended in a ditch?
Uh, before we go into non-public.
Yeah.
I got a request from the rec committee. About the haunted house used on the second floor. They are requesting that if the rec committee can use the haunted house or use the second floor for the haunted house. Uh, they will not put any staples in the walls, no tape on the walls, it'll be just our panels going up. Starting August twenty-fourth and within two weeks of the last uh haunted house showing, the, all that will be taken down and the whole area will be cleaned up again.
So we just spent fifteen thousand dollars to fix the second floor of the town hall.
Correct.
And we wanna shit it up with the uh haunted house. Which has been more or less permanently there for a couple of years. I, I, I don't have any problem with the idea of a haunted house, I have a, a problem with it there. And what I really have a problem with is the fact that. They don't pick up. I mean, and, and you, you know, it's. I mean, and, and you, you know, it's, if you want it for two months. Or they, the rec committee wants it for two months, is what you, no, three. I think that's absurd. That's what I personally think, I will not vote for it, somebody else can vote for it. If you said a week before and a week after, okay, I could handle that. But, you know, it doesn't, it's, it's not. It, all it does is it blocks the ability to, there's work that needs to be done on the second floor of this building.
Correct.
It can be used, right now, today. But the, by parking it up there, you can't use it. You can't fix it, you have to look at it, and there it sits, it's not. I don't think it's that big of a public benefit, I think there's a lot of people that would like to use that space, that would be able to use that space. If it wasn't tied up with haunted house for months or years on end. And the stuff is still there, it's in the middle of the floor, because. We can't take it out of there, cause it's for the haunted house, so.
So this is one of the conversations I've had with Bob, um, and I have requested that he reach out to like my box. And possibly the storage to them for the stuff. They break the storage, they drop it, pull everything out, they take it back, put it away, et cetera. I, I kinda have to agree with Dick, if it was, you know, two weeks before, two weeks after, fine, but it hasn't been. We had last year where they said, oh, we'll take it down within a month. Wasn't down.
Well, it was down, it just wasn't.
It wasn't down a month, remember, I go up there weekly, it wasn't down, it was still all over the place up until right before the painting was done. And then they had to move it around, and it was, it was pulling teeth, and it's nothing against you or Bob, it's the fact you don't have a committee that's gonna. Hunker down and pull it down when they need to. The, the rec committee, well, awesome and great, they didn't have the, the vampires here to pull it down. They had enough to pull it out, but not enough to.
Well, and the stage is still packed with all the stuff, you have, you have all the panels in the middle of the floor.
Well, that's because they were expecting to be able to use it again.
Well.
Well, and that's where it comes to packing, what I'm saying, either we get Bob a giant Connex box for two thousand dollars. Or he reaches out to like my box and has them store it, cause one of their boxes should be able to store all that stuff. And it's in a local facility supporting the town. They probably would, I would guess, would give a discount of some sort.
You know, the. It, it, you, you can't, it, it, it would have to be smaller, because you can't. You need to keep it inside the wall, so where it's been, you know, you walk in, then you're, you're in the experience. You'd have to keep it, you know, like a couple of feet off the walls.
Well, it's been off the walls on the sides and the, but we were using the stage as a set, and then the entryways, so you come into one door. That's what we were, this is the, this is the proposal that they asked me to ask the select board.
Well.
So if you guys are willing to even shorten the timeframe, two weeks before and two weeks after, I could bring it back to them?
I would say, two, I, 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 you know, two weeks before and two weeks after Halloween. And uh, you can't, you have to keep it, you have to keep the whole thing inside the walls. Meaning not attached to the walls, so theoretically I could walk around it. So where we still have, and will likely still have in October, files up there. I mean, we spent, the lawyer had to go up, we were trying to research deeds and stuff, the lawyer had to go work her way through the haunted house and the. Leftover parts of it to get to our files up on the back of the stage, so.
So I would be willing to say, this is the last year to get it right for them. Get it up, get it down, find a place to store it besides town hall. I know the rec department doesn't have any place, so if we gotta put an extra two thousand dollars in their budget for a Connex box. To get them one, it's a good way to store, a good way to store it.
Well, and then they have to evaluate, is it worth two thousand dollars?
Exactly, or do you talk to my box and see if they'll.
Right.
Drop a deal, I mean, they're, and I've discussed this before.
Or does it get stored in. And does it get stored in the storage here, where the fire trucks are? Or if we're gonna take on the freight shed. And think about redeveloping that for the fire trucks, then that space goes free, or if that's gonna stay the way it is. Then do we put it over in the freight shed? I mean, the panels are.
There are current, there is currently enough room in that fire shed to put that stuff with all the stuff that's already there.
Or if we're gonna take down, if we, if we get the files sorted out, this is the biggest waste of space in this old building, is this. File stuff going on here. Which is made out of an old haunted house.
Well, yeah, they asked to use four panels, and they acquired twelve.
They took, yeah, they took a lot of them.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened to the rest of them.
That was the other thing that the rec committee was asking, it's like, well, maybe we oughta just go and take our panels back, and I said.
Well.
Let's not do that right now, let's uh, we'll kinda work with everybody and play fair, uh, so. You, you're saying two weeks before, two weeks after?
Yeah.
And try and find a place, reach out to those different storage options, and I like Dick's option.
We need a better, we need a better, when it's over, it needs to be over.
Right.
So that we can go on and do other things there.
Well, cause another thing that we were looking into was possibly doing it outside at the rec.
Problem?
That we were looking into was one. Pardon me?
You have the issue with weather.
Is the weather, but we can get a whole panel of plastic, put over the top, you know, get it shut down to keep the water out. I mean, the, the other issue would be ventilator.
Yeah.
Keeping people out of it, when it's not used. We've had a couple ideas going around, we're still kinda working with it, we haven't really committed to anything, but now we're trying to figure out if we can do this. If we can't do this and get it to work, um, one of the things I did propose, I said, listen, we let's come up with a plan of action on how are you gonna design this? I said, I don't have the time to design it this year.
Well, the Birmingham's, what they used to do, theirs on School Street, which, I don't know if that was before you were here or not.
No, I remember them.
They, well, it was, they were really good haunted house, I mean, honestly. But they took in one end of the porch, and you went down, and because the porch had a, you know, and then out the other. I mean, you could conceivably, you could go all the way around on the deck, on the outside of the rec center. And just, I'm just saying.
Right.
You know, you could go.
So we, some different ideas have been thrown around, the, it's not, one of the issues is really not a. Bad issue, it's the place is rented on, e- every week.
Yeah.
And a lot of these rentals are planned out all year, two years in advance.
Yeah, sure.
So, like, right now, every weekend is booked, right up until after Christmas. And we're already booking in for next year already, so, anything that, like, we already put in the dates that we're gonna be doing our community dinners.
Yeah.
We put those in beginning of the year.
So then you add the space available.
So we knew that, hey, don't rent it out for this timeframe. Uh, and it's not, that's why it's not consistently every first weekend or anything like that, it's.
When you can book the space.
Because it's booked out a year, two years in advance.
Well, that brings up another subject, we probably should offer the space up here. For small groups. So if you have a group of twenty-five or thirty people, if you want it for an event, for a kid's birthday party or something like that. It could be, you know, we have, we just, you have to tell people it's not ADA compliant, that we don't have to be ADA compliant. Uh, but.
Right, get the toilets. Well, and we could, we could technically, we could do that, but I like, what do you just said, we gotta get the toilets fixed up and get those.
Well, no, they'd have to use the one down here. As I said, it's not ADA compliant.
So, alright, I will bring it back to them for two weeks before Halloween, two weeks after Halloween, that's all we're getting. And then we need to figure out where we're gonna store it other than the second floor.
Yeah. All right, see, uh, put that below it up.
Okay. I mean, I love the haunted house, but it, it did stick around a long time this year, it's not, like I said, not on you.
At all, I've been part of it, I, I've been the one designing it, they give me ideas, I kinda go up there, I kinda throw it together. Um, and then when it's time to take it down, it's like, okay, guys, you're gonna be help here, I can't do it all by myself. I don't have all the time in the world, if I can get a nice, the crew up there, we can get it down in one day. We could.
Uh, uh, well, when they, ultimately, they took it down, that's what they did.
Right. Go up there, get all the screws out.
Going to other people.
But a couple more on that, it's, cause you gotta get all the animatronics boxed up and get it put away, and you got all the. You know, the odds and ends of the decorations, the electrical.
Yeah.
And then the boards, the, the walls. But I will bring that back to them. And see what they say. Thank you, that's all I got.
So I think that should be a non-public.
You're gonna go on piece.
Okay, so.
Because it affects the, again, reputation of someone who is not a member of this board.
So we're gonna be going back with non-public under that one, or basically.
One A. Nine one A, three, Roman numeral two, C.
I'll second. Alright, well called, well.
Aye.
Dick. Curtis.
Yes.
T J S. Thank you, good night, Facebook, next time we'll see you, we are.